Notice of this meeting was mailed to the press and the Current of Egg Harbor Township. Notice was also delivered that day to the Egg Harbor Township Clerk and posted on the bulletin board in Township Hall. Advertise notice for this virtual streaming of this meeting were posted on our website and on social media on Friday, October 23rd.
Thank you, May. We have roll call.
Mr. Dela Barca.
Here.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Sullivan.
Here.
Mrs. Summer is absent. Mrs. Salagi.
Here.
Mrs. Byrd.
Here.
And Mr. Cuslan.
Here.
We're all now going to stand for the flag loop.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to be public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, everyone. Welcome. Welcome tonight. Welcome to our Tuesday, October 27th, October regular business meeting. I first want to sincerely welcome back our students, our teachers, our staff for our first week of our hybrid learning, where we have the entire student body will be in person for some part of the week. And we certainly wish everyone the best. I want to first thank our administration for working so hard to put the conditions together where we can have a smooth and a safe return to in-person learning. And of course, I want to thank our teachers and our staff so much for the great job that they do. We've had staff in these buildings all throughout since March. We've had some of our teachers and staff in since September with our special needs students. And of course, this week, we began with all back in for some portion of the week for our hybrid learning. So I want to thank our teachers, our staff, and of course, our administration for setting the conditions for our road back plan. One more issue I just want to make everyone aware of. There have been some major changes in the requirements on how we hold public meetings. The one thing we can count on during the COVID crisis is constant change. Constant change in conditions and constant change in guidance. So the Department of Community Affairs has recently issued regulations that sort of codify a lot of the executive orders that had been out there previously. But there are some consistencies and some changes. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. For this evening, we're going to be operating under our own hybrid model. Though we're back in person, we will also be accepting questions or comments over the phone as well as we, you know, simulcast at the meeting. We want this meeting that marks our first week back to be as inclusive as possible. Moving forward into November, I'm going to suggest that we return back to a more traditional in-person meeting as we've had in the past with some modifications. And we can talk about that a little further as we move forward. But I just wanted everyone to be aware of the changes that we are dealing with. So again, having said all those thank yous and again, welcome back and so great to see our student reps. I heard great things about all that happened in school today. I have a senior in the high school. She was back in. She had a great day back in school. And so with that, I'm going to turn the floor over to our superintendent for our superintendent's report.
Good evening and welcome back, everyone. It feels so great to be back and it feels great to be on the floor again and be able to present to you the great things that are going on in our school district. So this evening, I'm going to take you through a presentation, but we're still not back to where we've been in terms of student achievement, climate and culture, and highlighting our community partnership. So as we move into our November meeting, we'll have more of that now that the students are back to school. But for this evening, I'd like to brag a little bit about the great day that we had today. Our students coming back and the road back to school. We called the road back into school because our first day was spent with really all eyes on the students and on the teachers. That's how this plan was going to work. And I told people who I saw today, you know, we spent a lot of time putting those words on the paper and meeting with people and collaborating and developing the plan. And you can read it over and over and over again, but it doesn't become real until it goes into action and you see it for yourself and you feel it. And it felt really good today. It was actually like tears of joy, if you will, to see kids back in the classroom, to see teachers doing what they do best, and that's educating our students. Just want to share that my staff and I have walked the buildings and it was, you know, your typical first aid jitters, your typical seeing kids with their new sneakers on, their book bag and their lunch bags, walking into school, looking for where their classes are. Back when I was principal, they had papers. Today, they had their iPhones and they were trying to figure out where they had to go as everything was loaded on their phones as our kids are so techy now. But also coming into school along with all that freshness was masks, their hand sanitizer. Saw a little girl with two or three bottle wipes. You know what? They're ready. They're prepared because we prepared them. Had we have said E H T ready, how to protect yourself, protect all as we enter this unknown times. As I mentioned, we went through the building. So facility-wise, we have our floors lined with the yellow tape. We have six-foot distance markings. We had no wear-your-mask signs. We had announcements going on in the buildings, making sure that teachers and students had their masks on and remember social distancing. Our lunch process went well. Students were fed breakfast and grabbing go lunch at the secondary level and lunch in the cafeterias. I witnessed cafeteria at slay ball and it's not what it used to be. I'll show you some pictures. The lunch tables are gone. Students are sitting in desks six feet apart and eating their lunches. Kind of quiet, but the kids were eating lunch and it looked a little different, but we're making it work. And that's what we have to do and that's all I ask for is that flexibility and understanding and the ability to adapt to the current reality. Moving on to our different departments, curricular-wise, you know, education was going on. We got to IT. Yes, there was a couple little glitches with our technology today, but that when we researched it, just like we did last week, had nothing to do with bandwidth. So we're relieved to hear that. It has everything to do with the service provider who provides us our internet. So IT staff is working on that all throughout the day and we're working on correcting that situation, okay? So you can be assured that we're working. This is something I want to share with you. You can find this on our website and on social media as we continuously communicate with you in terms of what day it is, our times that our schools are running and are dismissing. So today you see it was Tuesday, A-Day, and that'll be tomorrow as well. And then Thursday will be B-Day and Friday will be B-Day. But look for these advertisements, if you will, on social media where we inform you what's going on. Here's some pictures. In the center here, it's a custodian. I happen to be passing by. He's spraying all the highly touched areas, all the doorknobs and handles throughout the high school. Over to the left, I thought this was creative, at slay ball. Every student gets a round disc with their name on it and when they use the facility, they put it on the little meter there. So if I had mine now and I walked over, I know I can't go into that lavatory because it already has the three people. That's the limit capacity. And these little kids were, I witnessed, it was really cool. They were waiting on their dot, waiting for a person to come out, take their circle, go to the classroom and they went and put theirs on and went in and used the facility. So kudos to the administration there for being creative and making things fun in this new normal. Up here to the right, it's a classroom Miller standing for the flag loop. It just gives you an idea of the spacing of the desk. And over here is the high school, the social distance line as they entered the high school. All right, this is the road back to school's journey. For those of you who haven't been with us, back in July, we had lots of community, school community input in terms of where we are and what we have to do. As we went through the journey, we experienced, and you've heard me say this many times, unclear guidance and changing conditions. But we've adapted. You know, sometimes I have to remind people, think about where we were, how far we've came and what we've done in between that shock of, okay, there you go, figure it out, to now, we've figured it out and we're here and we're doing it. We've been transparent, communicating this plan through superintendent's newsletters, our websites, social media, texts. Parents get texts, parents get emails. There's the parent portal that every parent has access to. And I put phone calls up there because I've made phone calls myself because I've seen some things on social media that are either not so nice or some folks, they may not understand. So I will pick up the phone and I'll call you and I'll ask you what you meant by that comment or I'll ask you what you need. How can I help, all right? And if you've helped a few people, they just maybe didn't know where to go. They didn't get the information in a timely manner in their own personal world. So the road back to school plan that was relevant to Egg Harbor Township came to our community in three different phases. I don't know. People don't be able to say. So phase one, as we started in second week of September, when we brought in our PSD PSI, it's our preschool, and our multiple disabled students, okay? They came in five days a week. Phase two was when we focused on social emotional learning. We brought our guidance counselors back into our schools to assist our students and we provided related services to students. And then in phase three is the phase we're in today, the day we waited for, October 27th, where teachers and students returned to classes at a reduced rate, but we're in our buildings. This is the operational plan that was shared with staff. It was put out specifically for today. It talks about schedules. Now staff received this, so they could read through. It walked them through the schedules. And I just, I'm showing this so you can see the work that goes behind the planning and the words that have to go on paper. And I thank Mr. Santilli for putting this together for us and sitting there and putting the words on paper and typing every one of these letters on here, all right? So parent guardian screening, transportation. So this is what our staff was required to read and to implement for today. So I'm just sharing that. Now I'm going to get back to this with you. Also, we conducted a hashtag E H T ready campaign where we shared learning videos over the last two weeks about how to wear the mask, how to get off a bus, how to drop off at school, how to get your lunch, all kinds of fun things. And I hope they were clear and relevant. Talking to the principals today, pretty much kids understood. If not, there was a helping hand for them. In the superintendent's corner on our website, I direct you here. It's important to know that we have an E H T ready link. And that link has to do with our restart and recovery plan. And these icons here are user-friendly way for you to find out what's going on in different areas. Most important one right here for us is the health and safety. So you click that link and it's tied into the Strauss Esme policy, the appendices that the county superintendent recommended that we use to share our plan with the public and with our Board of Education. So appendix says important because it's a critical area of operation, the general health and safety guidelines. And if you go through here, there's links that you can read up on and see how, what we're doing and protocol from anywhere from how to wear a mask, how to social distance, how to wear gloves, how to take gloves off, how to wash your hands, okay? So it's very intense, if you will. And there's a lot of information here for you to glean. What am I going to do here? Go back here, okay? And there's other areas here as well that go back to the appendices recommended by Strauss Esme. Also, in the bottom of this page is our COVID-19 dashboard, all right? It's important to me that we're transparent in terms of the positive cases that we have in the district. And this will give, it's updated. Steve, when do you update? Like once a week?
Today, yeah.
Okay, it was updated as early as today. We have three cases at the elementary level and one at the secondary and two amongst district personnel at this time, okay? So I wanted to share that resource with you and show you exactly how to get there. Now I'm lost. There I am. I got it. I got it. Okay. All right. Again, I want to stress being prepared and being ready is so important. For a large district, yeah, it took us some time, but I'm not that superintendent that makes knee-jerk decisions or react to things. There's a lot of time and research that went into a lot of what we had to do to get to today. So again, all these documents, a lot of thought goes through this and it's really a part of being a leader, which leads me to this quote, and I'm full quotes today. But the very essence of leadership is that have a vision. So we've had that vision for a long time to get back here, to get a sense of normalcy and give our students opportunity to enjoy school life again. But you can't blow an uncertain trumpet, okay? And, you know, hey, I'm a leader and I know when you're in the spotlight, you lead for a reason. You lead with pride and you lead with passion and you've got to take hits from people who don't agree with you. But when people say that, you know, there's no leadership here or leadership stinks, I hope I showed you the work that goes behind what we did today and it was open schools successfully, okay? Just an update on our track and field. Hey, I go out there every couple of days, see what's going on. I'm just fascinated with the process. The track and field were removed and we're starting to see the track be installed. So to the left over here, you'll see the gray portion of the track. If you remember what it looks like, it's going to be black and gray. And the gray represents the exchange zones for the relays. So the exchange zones are going in. And then up at the top is the track material. You see these big white bins on the track? That's the material for the black portion of the track. And I got the guy letting me dig through it and all it is are these little black particles that they get open up those bins, they spread them through the track, they smooth out and then they put a chemical on there to seal it. All right, so because of the weather, not much of that has happened this week, but we're assured that within the next week or so, the track will be finished. Then it'll be striped and numbered and it'll be all set and the turf is on its way. Over here in the right, there's some machines out there. I was wondering what they were. And the turf company is starting to stage their equipment out there in the high school parking lot. All right, just some advertisement here. We are in need of substitute teachers as every school district is in New Jersey. And what the board has graciously done is raised pay for substitute teachers. So if anybody's interested, if you have friends, families, neighbors who would like to join us now that we're open, we are paying our substitutes increased pay. So more information on our website. Thought I put information out on that. To our all Spanish-speaking parents, under our community resources section on our website, there are Recorso Para Padres, which is a noche latina night for our parents, our Spanish-speaking parents. This night is going to be dedicated to helping you navigate through the hybrid learning situation that we're in right now. So on October 29th at 6:30 PM, there's going to be a presentation by Ms. Jenny Dilks and she will assist anyone who's interested and I encourage families to attend. It's always a great night. This year it's virtual. We always enjoy going in person, but you know what? Like anything else, we make the best of it and just collaborating and bringing the community together makes us proud. Speaking of being proud, our 2020 Sustainable Jersey Green Team Collaboration Award is awarded to the Egg Harbor Township School District to our green team. And what that award is, if you remember, if you attend school boards each year during the school boards week, they have a dinner down in Atlantic City. We go to it every year. And Sustainable Jersey presents awards. And a lot of our schools got bronze awards, but this is an important award because it's a green team collaboration that recognizes municipal and school green teams who work together to advance sustainability in schools and their community. And in the video, you'll see the collaboration between the schools and the community and some of the areas in our community where our schools have helped improve different resources. So echo what Mr. Cuslan said. I thank our teachers, thank our administration. I thank my central administration staff and I thank the Board of Education for your support in making all this happen today. And I thank, it's a big thank you to all of the positive leaders. And that doesn't mean, when I say leaders, that doesn't mean you're administrative. Teachers are leaders, parents are leaders, students are leaders, okay? So all those who are positive. Because the pessimist complains that the wind, the optimist expects to change the wind, but the leader adjusts the sails. And that's what we've been doing, all of us in this community for the last seven months or so. We've just been adjusting the sails. Can I tell you they're totally adjusted? No, because tomorrow, we're going to be adjusting them a different way and another way to make sure that ship sails. And as I tell my staff every Monday when I write to them, patience, have understanding, be flexible, but most of all, be positive because that's what's going to get you through the turmoil that'll get you through today, okay? So always let's smile in our eyes and let's get through this together, okay? All right. So here's my superintendent's report. And the video shows you might have to hit like. I have to say, when I saw this, I brought a tear to my eye. I got choked off when they sent it to me this afternoon. And it also covers Sustainable Jersey. And then at the end, you get to meet our new mascot.
Egg Harbor Township Schools and local government have a long history of collaborating on projects to protect and preserve our natural resources.
The 220-acre nature reserve sanctuary has provided numerous school and community projects, including the nature reserve and arboretum smart trail project where students installed QR codes along a trail. Students from our Eagle Academy actually worked together with the township to build outbuildings and a learning center.
Most of our service learning projects involve the kids identifying needs within our community that involve the environment and work with community members and community leaders to solve some of our most important issues. We worked with local businesses, community leaders, and members of the local historical society to create a six-acre community garden where members of the community can come and practice sustainable gardening, grow organic crops that they then share with other community members and a local food bank. The township has held professional development occasions with teachers. We installed a Gaga court at Tony Canale Park.
Sustainable Jersey is the common threat that has strengthened the partnership between the school district and the municipality. We want to thank Sustainable Jersey for spearheading collaborative opportunities which have resulted in the betterment of our community. Thank you Sustainable Jersey for the 2020 Green Team Collaboration Award.
Columbus Day weekend, we had our mystery egg hunt where we sort of gave a little hint of what the mascot would look like. Got a lot of excitement on Instagram and Facebook and the golden egg winner is about to be revealed. We're going to swing by the house, do a little parade and actually unveil the mascot for the first time.
We had to go to the bank at first for my brother and all of the eggs were getting posted. So I told my mom we had to like hurry up and try finding the eggs. And so as we were leaving, we thought one would be at the library. So on the way there, I told her that the golden egg was posted. So then we turned around and we found out that it was at the community center. So I knew exactly what bush it was in. So then we were the first ones there.
Okay, so more to come from Mighty the Eagle. Thank you to Egg Harbor Township Education Foundation who funded the mascot's uniform and I was really behind the campaign there. And to Leanna Mullen for having fun with it and to whoever's under Mighty, thank you for standing out there for getting photographs and going along with the whole project. So again, great things going on. This is some fun. I wanted to end it with some fun. Congratulations to, you know, our collaborative group there, our green team. That's awesome. And again, thank you to all and great job. E H T pride, we're E H T strong. And overall, we had a great day today and looking forward to many more great days. So again, thank you. That's my report.
Well, thank you, Dr. Gruccio, for that report and thank you for your leadership. And I think again, to restate, as you can all see, you know, a smooth and safe return to in-person instruction for our students, for our teachers and our staff is our number one priority right now at this time. So with that, I'm going to now ask for our student representatives to give us a report and tell us how things are going and welcome back. It's good to see you guys. And we. Yeah, where are you most comfortable? Sure, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. We are knocking on November and the Egg Harbor Township School District is in full swing. We have a lot of exciting news to update you on. First off, I want to start by congratulating all of you guys, the staff and students for our first successful day back to school. Although we achieved the goal of the road back to school, the road back to school is not over and there's a lot of stuff we can continue to do to make this transition smooth. I want to talk about noche latina too, like Dr. Gruccio. It's a very important event and it is held this Thursday. And I want to encourage all Spanish parents to attend this event because it allows you to get more involved in the community and it strengthens the bond between the students, the teachers, and it just makes you more informed about what's happening. I would also like to take a moment to remember Mr. Winters and the great impact he had on our school district. Students, teachers, and the administration have been doing a lot to remember him. There was a ceremony last week at Tony Canale Park to remember his work. And there is also a scholarship being set in place by the Egg Harbor Township Education Foundation to remember his work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Before I. Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Is that better?
There's, you're loud enough. I don't know what's going on. I'm just, you speak, we heard you. We heard her too. Thank you.
Before I begin with my portion of the update, I want to also express my condolences to the entire district, but in particular, the English department with Mr. Winters passing. Truly a very tragic event. He went far too soon. And I would like to take a moment to recognize Ms. Salvatore, who happens to be my English teacher in Gabby's as well, for really doing a tremendous job of being sure that he's honored and that we remember his legacy. I know she's held a poetry reading for him. And I just wanted to thank her for that because it is very important. And some more exciting news, though. The National Honor Society did a cleanup of High School Drive and Jake Glassy Drive over the weekend. It was a great success overall. Students were split up into groups and walked along various regions of the streets picking up trash. It was a really great community effort, showing their E H T pride. And especially in a time like this, it's important that we as a community come together and certainly the environment is something we can all get behind. So that was really great to see. We want to thank our senior ambassadors for creating a virtual tour in the hopes of helping freshman students on their first day of school. The tour was posted on the Egg Harbor Township website and senior ambassadors will continue posting informative material to continue helping our freshmen. posting informative material to continue helping our freshmen in their transition to high school. So they've done a really great job with that. Mr. Margaron and his AP Government and Politics students have been working incredibly hard on encouraging civics education and youth involvement in democracy. Now, as a member of his class myself, I can personally attest to the fantastic effort that he and my fellow classmates have put forth. And I want to be perfectly clear, we're not engaging in partisan debate, we're engaging in civil discourse in the hopes of fostering a more informed populace, and that's what the class is really all about. So I want to thank Mr. Margaron for his effort. It's really inspiring to see all of my peers and some teachers get out in the community, get involved in democracy, and really try to foster a change. I'd like to echo Gabby's sentiments about our school reopening. I felt nothing short of completely safe and secure while in school today, and my peers have said the same. Social distancing was well maintained, masks were excellently enforced, and teachers and administrators were beyond helpful in accommodating students in this new learning environment. So on behalf of the entire student body, I want to thank all of you for a job well beyond done in our school reopening. To echo Dr. Gruccio, today was nothing short of a home run for our school district, it's exactly what we needed during this time. And as always, Gabby and I are grateful for the opportunity to update you all, and we thank you for your time and attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, very much. It's great to see you and great to hear from you as well. We are now going to move to our first public comment period. This is on agenda items only, public comment on agenda items only, so we will take folks who are here in person first before the phones. We'll ask for your name and address, and public comments run for a three-minute time period. And I just want to remind folks, we cannot discuss personnel or litigation. It's also possible that you might have a complex question, and someone might have to get back to you with the answer. So with that, we'll start with anyone who's here present, and then we'll see who may be on the phone. Okay, I don't see anyone in the, in the room. We'll see if anyone's dialing in for agenda items.
Hi, my name is Kikiel, and I live at 34 Diamond Road.
Go ahead with your public comment.
Okay, I am a teacher at the elementary level, and I'm also a parent to four children at all different grade levels in school. I'm also a parent to four very different friends, a child with an IV, a disciple of Laura, and a junior on the supply campus. What we're doing right now is not helping, and we're failing the children. We are trying to put shared time into a one-to-one. We cannot be teaching when we are trying to teach in person's hands at the same time as personal. The internet has been bridged up a lot of the many problems that we face. We cannot give our time and attention while we even need our students to make too delicate a deal. We should be giving each group different attention, and that stuff is not happening. I urge the board to listen to those that are in the classroom, teaching and kids, to teach. Do you need social teachers to cooperate differently, to focus effective teaching to better students' learning from home? Whether other teachers still develop different classrooms, school needs, with the day even maybe to be instructed in person, murder, and personal. We could be using the times and smelters that have, that last the group's learning capacity to play with our class, to schedule early to the evening's later lunch. When there are learning gaps with one too many to reach it, to have not the in-person instructions in part, we need to stop learning without even awe or a feeling of tolerance, and I am none of them. It is about today. Live streaming while in person teaching and not the back.
Okay, so thank you for your comment, that was not an agenda item, we do appreciate that. I believe we're doing the best we can, under, you know, very difficult circumstances. And again, our road back to school is a living document, so we're prepared to make adjustments and changes as necessary, but we think we have a plan in place that is very sound at this point. If there's anything else, Doc, you'd like to add, or we'll move on, move along. period later, those of you listening at home as well. So we're going to move now into finance and operations, and first I'm going to see if there are any comments from either the chair or administration on finance and administration, finance and administration.
I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Anaya.
You never mentioned about Amy not being here.
I do have an update, Mr. Castellano, for the board, just because...
You never mentioned about Amy not being here. Summer.
Good, okay. I just want to give a brief update, just because we've had several grants come in, there's been a lot of questions as far as what grants came, what are they for, when do they expire, all that stuff. So I basically am giving a quick snapshot of which grant is which, and what the purpose was, and how the monies have been spent or identified. Specific for the pandemic, COVID-19, okay. So the first one that came through was the CARES Emergency Relief Grant, and that application, it was an actual application process, was due to the state in June, for the spending window of March 1st through September 30th of 2022. It's the biggest window we got in any particular grant. The amount awarded to us was just over a million dollars, being split between us and non-public schools. And the purpose of the spending, specific in the guidance, I referenced the code, was any activity that's authorized by IDEA grant. In this particular case, out of district tuition. Reason we went there was because we had just gotten $4 million cut by the state aid, and we know we had that as an easy cost, it was a wash to help us offset that budget cut. The next one we heard about was the Digital Divide Grant, and this was to help meet the needs of the students, meeting the digital divide, to be able to have virtual instruction in case we didn't come back in September. But they actually didn't tell us anything about it till September, and it was due right away, we had a week to turn it around. The spending window, they let us go backwards to any spending that was done in July, all the way through this month. Even though they said the grant was through spending through the end of this week, last week, I had to report everything I spent and ask for my reimbursement. So we did, the spending purpose for that was specifically for purchasing of one-to-one instructional devices and hotspots for public school students. So with those funds, we spent money on Surface Computers, Chromebooks, Chrome tablets for staff and for students, and some hotspot Wi-Fi for students at home who may not have internet. Money's gone. Then we heard about the Corona Relief Funds at the end of September, and this was an allocation through state aid, it's not an application process, it was an allocation, they just told you this is what you're getting. And we got almost $600,000. Specifically, they said it's anything necessary, that was necessary incurred expenditures due to the public health emergency with respect specifically to the coronavirus disease. With that, we purchased a technology for staff, we got headsets and webcams, so they can work from the classroom to stream to students at home. We also improved our wireless access points throughout the school, which is basically making our signal stronger throughout the school in different areas. We ordered another 800 Chromebooks. We also ordered through this grant some classroom protective equipment, specifically student masks, bins for containers to segregate supplies, instrumental covers, so they can actually find a performing arts in class, classroom dividers, et cetera. As well as we did a WAN upgrade at specifically Alter and Fernwood, and that has to do with the traffic, if you remember Mr. Erdabey's presentation two weeks ago. FEMA, FEMA came through federally and said, any allocation, it's a rolling application, you can do it at $2,500 increments, minimally of $2,500 had to be spent. We have identified to date 320, excuse me, 238,000. Specifically, what was the spending for? Anything to manage, control, or reduce the imminent threat to public health and safety. For staff and buildings, not for students, it's very specific, it wouldn't let us do anything for student-related expenses. So we've allocated or identified nursing and staff PPE, listed a couple of examples. The interim superintendent, Mr., excuse me, Dr. Hery, to help us get through this and all the work that he's done to help gather us, prepare for today with Mr. Santilli. Summer nurses for health screenings when the students were practicing in the summer, it was an unanticipated cost. And any cleaning and sanitizing, disinfecting supplies. And this grant specifically had to do with, it wasn't something that was already budgeted, it had to be something above and beyond. And we have already spent 238,000 that we identified of things that were unanticipated on top of those other grants. So to summarize, right now, we've identified four different funding sources. The allocation or application amounts totaling 2.2 million, what we've identified thus far is 2.4 million, and FEMA does have discretion. We are dumping 238 million at, excuse me, 238,000 at them, they may do all, they may do some, it's really not 100%, but that's what we're applying for at this point, and the number just keeps rolling as more things come up. So I know it was a snapshot, but are there any questions to kind of help understand the difference between them?
Mr. Price, I have a question.
Sure.
Shandra, can you go back to Slide 1, the CARES grant?
Sure.
I don't see a lot of breakdown on that with the other ones. So is there anything that may be duplicating or back and forth between that one and the others?
So the reason this one's concise is we used it 100% for tuition. So we have students that are placed out of district, which is what you can, is an allowable cost under the IDEA entitlement grant.
Okay, so this particular one, then, is for tuition.
And that was truly, in a nutshell, just put it no other way, to help offset that $4 million cut. We knew we had millions in tuition, and it was a very quick offset to identify, to help us get to our budget cut need.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And at that time, it was a question about technology, but uh-huh, we got more money for technology later, so it worked out all, it all worked out. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Byrd.
So now, all the additional technology that we've added, are we 1:1 at this point, Mr. Price, or close to it?
So at this point, we're about 5,300 out of 7,200. So we're getting there, much closer.
Hopefully that will be in the next budget.
What was that?
Hopefully, in our next budget.
Every year, we always add more, so that's the goal, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
And yes, I agree, that ought to be our goal, 1:1, especially in the times we're in. Okay, so at this point, I am going to first ask for a motion on 7.1 and 7.2.
Mrs. Sullivan, motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do have a discussion, I have two questions in regards to purchases. On 7.4, we're purchasing riding mowers for facilities at 55,307,20. How many mowers will actually be purchased under that amount? How many mowers will be delivered?
Could you give me one second, my computer died, I'm having a little bit of walk, but I will pull up the, pull up the backup, it also is there, but I will pull that up for you and get you an answer in a few shakes.
All right, and the other question?
Yep.
7.14, asset disposal of a 2004 Ford pickup truck. We're going to vote on that tonight, to dispose of it. What happens to that pickup truck? What is the procedure for, you know, where does it go, and what is the procedure after we approve that? What will happen with that pickup truck?
So that I can answer, we have initially, any equipment that's disposed of is first looked at for parts. Once the parts are depleted, we can't use it anymore for any parts, we go ahead and get a board approval for disposal. First step is to go through, we use GovDeals, is some kind of way of advertising that we're disposing of it, we use GovDeals on our website, and after that, if there's no biz, we will scrap it. And then the scrap offsets that budget account very quickly.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm the process again, I remember before that it was explained, but I just wanted to clarify it. Okay, thank you.
And I'm pulling my agenda back up to get that other answer for you.
And why don't we, in the meantime, if there, is there any other discussion on just 7.1 and 7.2? Why don't we go ahead and take roll call on 7.1 and 7.2, and then we'll come back to Shandra.
Okay. Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion on 7.3 through 7.15.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mrs. Sullivan. All right, now, if there's any discussion on those items, we'll entertain Mr. Price's question and any other discussion on, on those items.
So it is a total of three mowers, we have one mo, these are all replacement equipment that was budgeted with Mr. Brunetta's spreadsheet, if you remember, he talked about the age that chart he gave, the release purchase. So it's one super mower for 23,000, and two smaller ones, about 16,000 each or so.
Okay, thank you, so it's...
And they're district-wide, so although it may say, you know, they ship to the high school as our ground storage, it's what we use district-wise.
So we're replacing three mowers.
We are replacing, correct. Everything in the equipment and on the facilities end, whether it was their vehicles, or vans or trucks, is always a replacement, there's, we haven't had any new things introduced in a lot of years, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi? Excuse me, start over, Mr. Price.
Mr. Price, yes.
I skipped the motion. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move to curriculum, and forgive me, I forgot to mention, Ms. Summer, who is our curriculum chair, is not with us this evening, she is a teacher in another district, and she had her back-to-school night. And she is also our curriculum chair, but before we move to curriculum, I'll see if there's anything from administration, any comments or anything to add.
Thank you, Mr. Castellano, there's no updates at this time.
Very good, thank you. So then I'm going to look for a motion on 8.1 and 8.2.
Mr. Price, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes. Okay, moving to personnel, I'm going to ask Dr. Charlton if there are any comments for public session.
There are no updates tonight, Mr. President, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm going to ask for a motion on 9.1 through 9.7, please.
Second. Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion on personnel? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Now, we're going to move to policy, and I'll see if there are any comments from our chair.
I don't have any major comments. I didn't want to also, Dr. Herry, if there's only any updates or anything that we need to say here on that policy.
There's really no updates. However, I draw the board's attention to 10.1, Regulation 1581 Domestic Violence. It's the first of two readings. Just for clarification, that policy went through the Policy Committee back in April, but failed to get onto the agenda, so although it's new for the members of the Board of Education, it's been approved by the Policy Committee, and it's approved for you tonight for its first reading, and it will appear again back in November for its second reading. The, well, nothing pertaining to what we have here, but we will be having a policy meeting on November 2nd, which is this coming Monday.
Thank you, Dr. Herry.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion then on 10.1 through 10.8.
Motion, Sullivan? Second.
Is there any discussion on policy? Seeing none, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Delabarka?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Gilbert Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Solagi?
Yes.
Mrs. Byrd?
Yes.
And Mr. Castellano?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move into just a few items on communications. We have an updated board calendar. Some of us were able to attend some of New Jersey School Board's workshop over the past week. There were, there were many useful sessions that I attended dealing with our road back and our return to in-person instruction. There was also sessions, of course, on the, on the new Open Public Meetings Act regulations, which I spoke about earlier. One thing that I wanted to highlight is I attended the legislative panel discussion, which was, which was really excellent because we had leadership, all of the leaders from the legislature were there, and just the thing that I wanted to note is there was, in both houses, and on a bipartisan basis, there was support unequivocally to keep moving towards full funding under S2, sometimes known as A2 and S2, or S2 for short. And what that was, legislation that was passed several years back as an amendment to the School Funding Reform Act, which dated back to '08. And that act has, has helped us to gain somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million in recurring revenue, because what that act did was it recognized that back in '08, '09, what we set up was a situation where districts who were losing students continued to receive funds for those students even though they no longer had the students there, but districts like us that were gaining students, and we all know during the time period when we gained students, we didn't pick up the aid that we needed for those additional students. And we're still trying to rectify that situation, and A2, S2 will do that. So I was just very happy to hear that there was bipartisan support to continue with fully funding that law. And there were many other things, and I'll, that were worthwhile at workshop, and so I'll, I'll turn it over to Lou to any other school board-related topics that you might want to.
No, just a comment, the workshop was really excellent. I attended the same session on legislation, and I agree with Pete on that. It was really an interesting time, and it was interesting to see how the interaction between the two parties representative and how they try to get along and maybe do something for education, which is great. I did attend a session on mental health in school and what's going on with programs. The specific one I saw was from the superintendent up in Ramsey, New Jersey, and a different program that they've established up there to help not only the kids, but the teachers and the staff with the concerns about mental health that's going on in schools right now, and with kids especially. And I was interested in, I think I sent this to some of the board members or to the superintendent, you know, the principals are very much involved, and we don't often think of principals, but they're the ones who's getting the brunt of the concerns. They're the ones to the parents' call, they're the ones who have some of the problems. So we should be appreciative not only of our staff, but also of our principals, not only of our teachers, but, and he's a principal over here.
I agree.
And I'm a former principal, so I understand. But they're just saying things like, how are you, superintendent or assistant superintendents, not discussing necessarily the school situation, but asking the principal, how are you? What do you need? Can I help you? Because those kind of questions don't often get asked. And the superintendent, and I know our superintendent is the same way, they know their administration, they know their families, they know what's going on necessarily at home, and sometimes the principal needs a little extra pat on the back, like extra comment or some kind of personal help. So I thought that was quite interesting. And overall, I did attend a session, I attended another session that was about having information to the public and that kind of information, and how we share information with the public and communications. And just a reminder to all our board members, you can go back to that now for a year, and anything that you would like to do that you couldn't, were not able to do last week, is open to you all now for another whole year. So, which is not the usual opportunity when we go to these conferences. We go to a workshop and you miss something. This time, you can go and catch up on everything, because you have a whole year, everything's being recorded, and I think that's a super benefit. And from what I understand from the leadership of school boards, it was very successful. They were very happy, had great attendance, great interest, so that's always good to hear. All right, just for our information, the Atlanta County School Boards Association meets on December 8th. The program has not been set yet, but I'll certainly, we'll tell you all about that. That is another virtual meeting for the county association. And thank you, Pete, for giving me the opportunity to say something.
You're welcome, Lou, very much. And one more exclamation point. This district, we fought very, very hard for A2, S2.
Yeah.
And so we certainly look forward to its full implementation. So with that, we're now going to open it up to comments on any topic, and we'll start with folks who are here in, in person first. We'll ask for your name and address. Three minutes will be the time period, and again, we cannot speak about litigation or personnel, and sometimes a complex question may require that somebody gets back to you, you know, with the answer. So, members of the public, we're present.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Alec Malari. I reside at 2 Tanchester Brook Road.
[inaudible]
Is this good?
No.
Is it good now?
We're getting warmer.
All right, is this going to work? I want you to talk to the next people coming.
Gotcha.
So I'm just going to clip it here. And, go ahead.
Is this good?
Yeah. It doesn't go any higher, I'm sorry, you're tall.
It's all right.
Try that again.
Is it good? All right. Good evening again. I am Alec Malari. I am a senior from Egg Harbor Township High School, who has been swimming for the Seahawk Swim Club for 10 years now. And I'm, I have volunteered to be the athlete representative to present to you all why you, the board, can trust us from an athlete's perspective, and what it means for us athletes if you allow us to utilize the pool again at the high school. So first, we've been doing this since the summer, wearing our masks even outdoors. I mean, we're still doing it now in our private facility, which we can only use temporarily. And as well as this, the Seahawks have been maintaining and following the regulations set up by the county, state, and USA Swimming. And then because of this, you can see that we are already experienced with the regulations, and we're disciplined with them, and you will not have to worry about us disregarding these regulations. And there is also a direct entrance to the pool, and that the athletes are all familiar with, so it is highly unlikely that we will go to any other part of the school, and we will be confined solely to the pool. Now, what it means for us athletes, if you allow us to utilize the pool again, it'll be, you know, more room for training, which is good for preventing COVID from spreading once again, and it allows the athletes to focus on individual aspects of their stroke. As well as this, it allows us to continue to have an outlet for any stress, whether it be academically, socially, et cetera, and it provides some sense of normalcy for us. Not to mention that we're finally not staring at a computer screen and getting social interaction. It also allows us to have something to look forward to and work for, which is critical in the development of youth and young adults. And as a swimmer for both the Seahawks and the high school, allowing the Seahawks to swim at Egg Harbor Township High School helps some athletes to attain the proper training necessary to, you know, bring the pride and glory to the school that it deserves, and it helps us simply achieve a long-term goal that we may have. And finally, you know, the pool is just like our second home. Some of us have been swimming here even before we got to the high school, myself included. So it would be wonderful just to experience swimming in there again, especially for some of the seniors like myself going away to college. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comment, and thank you for coming up. You know, I, before I let, you know, Dr. Gruccio, you know, speak on this, I totally hear you. I get what you're saying, and we want nothing more but to resume all of our normal activities in the buildings as soon as we're able to, not only in the buildings but outside. We want everything to get back to normal just as soon as, as we possibly can do so. But I'm afraid we're just not able to do that right now. I mean, I think everyone's aware, we just got our students back in person today. So you, please bear with us, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gruccio, because she has some more, some more detail on our use of facilities. But you're, you're heard, and I get you. I hear where, where you guys are coming from.
And I concur, Mr. Castellano. We do hear you. I have received emails from Mr. Elko, and I'm well aware of the request, but, you know, the situation we're in right now is our road back to school plan says no use of facilities to outside groups. Also, just to assure you, I have been doing my research. I have been asking questions. I sit on the executive board of the NJSIA, and I know that doesn't correlate to, you know, what you folks do in terms of recreation, you know, you're more aligned with US Swimming. I also sit on the executive board, as does Dr. Herry of the Coastal Swim Officials Association for Cape Atlantic Region, and we've had these discussions only with all the executive committees, and we're just at a standstill because pools are not being used right now. High schools are not renting out pools, and I don't even know where the winter season's going to be for high school at this point. I'm still awaiting the health and safety guidelines and protocols from NJSIA. Our meeting is coming up within the next couple of weeks, so I'm sure that the medical task force will have guidelines for us, and I spoke with my fellow superintendents, and, you know, we're all in the same boat. We don't have enough answers to make decisions to open up our facilities or change the road back to school plan as it stands at this time. But as Mr. Castellano said, we hear you. Please be patient with us. You know, we're just kind of at a standstill right now in terms of what the future will be for high school sports, as well as use of facilities for recreational sports in our community. Sorry, I wish I had a better answer, but as soon as I get one, I'll be sure to pick up the phone and let Mr. Elko know.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Keith DeWitt. I live at 103 Hawthorne Road. I'm a proud parent of two students in the district. Okay, one, I'm sorry, can you hear me? Okay. So I'm a proud parent of two kids in the district. They were so excited to be in school today, okay? And you guys have done a lot of heavy lifting, and I'm going to ask you to do a little more. I'm going to ask you to open that pool. Okay? I understand where you're coming from, Dr. Gruccio, but do you know GCIT is opening the pool now? To the Greater Philadelphia Aquatic Club. In fact, they're going to be hosting swim meets in December to outside facilities. Okay? So I think, based on the fact that chlorine, okay, kills COVID, and that our pool here in the district has one of the best air filtration systems, that we can open our pool safely and allow those Seahawks back in to swim. Okay, allow AJ to do his thing. Okay? Um, he's talked about the guidelines, he's talked about wearing of masks. Okay, we've, we've seen all that. But I want you to look around this room. Okay, if you feel safe in this room, I do, then we should allow, certainly allow ourselves to feel that the Seahawks being in the pool, they should feel safe as well. Okay? I thank you for your time, and I, hopefully you'll adjust the sails, because nobody wants to blow an uncertain trumpet. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Bell. I lived in the township for 20-plus years. I am also a healthcare provider, providing healthcare to Atlanta County residents for 23-plus years. I have two students, our sons, who have gone through the EHT Public School System, yay, public school mom, from kindergarten through, my oldest son is, you guys are principals, college, and he attends Yale University, for which he swims for, and I can thank both our teachers in the past, our public school system, as well as the Seahawk Swim Team. My older son is a senior in high school, swims competitively for the high school as well as the Seahawks. I am on the board. I've been on the board for 10-plus years. I always say it's my part-time, non-paying job, and I'm also their current vice president. So I hear all of you, and I'm going to tear up my little speech that I wrote, and I'm going to respond to your statement. I, they brought me here today, or I asked to come, because I wanted to talk a little bit about the science of our plan, what went into it. Our board is made up of teachers, a retired law enforcement, healthcare provider, and a supervisor for the public works, okay? So you put those people in a room, just like yourself, and what are we going to do? We're going to put the safety of the students and the athletes here. I'm certainly not going to put my son or any other child after delivering healthcare my whole professional career in harm's way. And I'm going to just comment about the superintendent's speech. I hear you. It is so exciting when you actually see your plan work. So in response to what AJ spoke earlier about, these kids learn the ins and outs of maintaining six feet, maintaining mass, having their coaches meet them at their cars, temperature screenings. We do the same verbal screening that I saw that was up here. We follow CDC Guidelines 2AT. We follow Governor Murphy's guidelines that he set forth for indoor participation, 2AT. And I'm proud to say, we have not had one athlete, one child, ranging from five to 18, that has come down with COVID. Not one. So I think that's pretty extraordinary. So we are pleading to you, because we are unique as a sport. We, our kids can't go and play catch with their dad or their mom. They can't practice their sport that up until this pandemic, they were practicing. My son alone, 19-plus hours a week. Let that resonate, 19-plus hours a week. He's currently getting up at 4:00 in the morning to pick up other kids who can't drive yet and traveling to another township to use a mediocre, at best, non-competitive pool, so that he has possibly the opportunity to still swim in college. And yes, this is very emotional for me. So yes, we have a plan that works, we're going to distribute it to all of you. I hope that you actually read it. We are a sport that, in my opinion, is the safest. We have no contact with shared equipment. We have no face-to-face contact. We're in a medium that can't transmit the illness. So I actually want to open it up to any questions regarding the safety of swimming, and I'll certainly answer anything you guys have. And I'd like to distribute our plan as well. That would be That would be great. Yeah, if there's any, like, direct questions, I'd love it. Anything? Okay, so I'd like to say again, it's probably the safest sport and by denying access to the pool, unfortunately, unlike other teams and sports, our kids are in a no-play situation. It's affecting them emotionally as well as physically. So thank you guys so much. You're all awesome. I appreciate the time. And that was totally not what I wrote. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Again, we, we hear you. We hear what you're saying. We get it. We really do.
I wanna make a comment, if that's okay, Mr. Castellano?
Okay, we're gonna have board member comments in a minute, but sure.
Well, since we're on the topic, I, I have a daughter who swims for the Seahawks. So I feel I have a first-person perspective on everything that has been discussed this evening, so I wanna share my perspective on it as well. So when they speak of their plan and how they implemented their plan, I can't tell you, they're not joking. I mean, every single practice, the kids had their masks on, got test, you know, got the temperature check. They were socially distanced in the lanes, in the pool. Literally socially distanced in the pool. So we're talking about athletes who some can go on to Olympic trials. And then you're talking about people like my daughter who just really likes to swim. They're following these guidelines because their coaches take it so seriously. And I completely 100% agree that there is no other medium for these kids. They cannot go to the Canali Center and play soccer when they used to maybe play here. There's no other options. We're talking about kids who are using this to go to college. They dedicated, since they were four, they've dedicated hours and hours of training. And yes, COVID has hit us all and we've all had to adjust. But we're talking about a pool that they have spent a lot of money and invested in the pool for, that we have benefited from. We have a door that they can enter from the exterior of the building, come in, they don't have to go into the hallways. We need to help these kids in some way. There is no other alternative. And I get it, that, okay, we're not opening up to everyone yet. However, the Seahawks have proven every year that they've used our pools, that they have lived up to the demands we've placed on them, the expectations they've had placed on them. These kids need this. And, and I wouldn't attest to it if I didn't see it as a parent, every single day. So I just hope that we can lead. GCIT can do it. And they can have other pools, other organizations come into their pool for needs. And we really need to look a little closer at this and see if we can be leaders here and let this sport that has no other options, let them in and give them a chance. Because if they can socially distance in a lane while they're swimming, I'm pretty sure they can figure out the safest way to keep our pool area safe for them and for our students. So I appreciate that you guys came out and set your perspectives from different levels, from the student perspective, from the parent perspective, from the board perspective. It's not easy. You know what you're up against. I mean, our hands are tied in many ways. However, coming with, you know, the student perspective, to me, that's the most important perspective. And we're talking about an athlete who's probably going to college. He needs the opportunity. He's devoted his whole life to this and he has no other, he can't go swim on a football field.
Mrs. Byrd?
I asked for your patience and your understanding. I heard the plea. I have a plan. I spoke to Mr. Elko. And I also found on the Gloucester County Institute of Technology that this time their aquatic center is closed until further notice. Our pool is closed until further notice. Our pool is closed until further notice. I hear you. I heard what you said. And I ask you for patience and understanding that research is being done. I made it clear. I am a swim official. There's nothing more that I want is kids to be in the pool and for me on the deck and watch them swim. But at this time, I don't have enough information to open the Egg Harbor Township High School pool, okay? So I hear you and I'm working to get to that place. But until, we're just gonna have to be patient.
I'm Chris Dewitt. I live at 103 Hawthorne.
Three minutes, please, yes.
Right here in the township as well. Both, I have a son and a daughter. And I just would, please, I understand what the website says right now. But we know as of November 1st, that that pool has been opened for swim teams to come into. We know that the day after the teachers convention, that GPAC will be coming in to use that pool for practice. We know that they are holding a meet that we, the Seahawks, that are not fully prepared, have been invited to compete in, in December. So that's all I ask, is I understand what the website says. If you would please make some other calls just to find out.
Thank you.
It's Gloucester County Institute of Technology.
Yes, I'm aware of it, yes. But I just thought, I thought you were talking about ACIT.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, I wanna keep order. Let's keep order. Next, next comment, please.
Hi, Debbie Rockman, 189 Alder Avenue. I was a swimmer for many, many, many years. I get it. I, I do, I get it. But I don't know, if somebody could just let me know, are they playing football? Are we doing any other sports? Are, are we doing any other sports?
Other sports.
Are we playing football or are we?
Outside sports, yeah, ball sports, outside sports.
Outside, okay. I think some of the communities that have opened their pools probably aren't as large as us. We have a lot of kids. We're probably the largest school district in the state. Yeah, we really are. Can you hear me okay? Because this is a new one and it's kinda thick. I, I just, okay, attach. That doesn't work, this is the microphone, this little tiny thing here? Okay, thanks. Everybody in, everybody who has children in this school district has something that they need for their kids, everybody. And theirs is the most important, but we can't please everybody. And I know that you guys have been working your tails off. I can't even imagine the hours that you've put in and the hours that everybody in this district who works for the district have put in to do all of this stuff. It would be nice if we could accommodate everybody. It would be nice if we could say, yeah, let's open up the pool. Let's do this, let's do this. Johnny needs this, Janie needs this. It's impossible, but you're doing the best you can. I'm all for keeping the pool closed. If we're gonna go through all of this and continue to go through all of this, then we have to make sure that everything is as safe as can possi, as it can possibly be. That's just how I feel about it. And I'm really, quite frankly, sick of listening to everybody that has kids in this district whining and complaining about every darn thing that comes down the pike, except that I've encouraged over the past couple of weeks, everybody complaining, go to the school board meeting, see what it's about, talk, ask your questions there. Don't, you know, you're on here complaining, but find out what's going on yourself. You can see that. That didn't happen. But anyway, so I just hope, you know, thank you for the great job that you're doing and just all be well because we need you. So if any one of you guys like croaks or something, I don't mean to be, but, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to like say.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in person, please?
Can we respond to a comment?
No, we're gonna, anyone who hasn't spoken, we're gonna let speak. And then if people want to have another, if you wanna speak again, we'll allow that. We don't do sort of, you know, a back and forth, but we'll, we'll, we'll listen to comment. So if anyone else has a comment from in the room, anyone, so if you'd like to speak again, please.
Mr. Castellano, I just wanted to remind you, we also have the phone comments.
Yep.
We have them for the first time, too.
Yep, we'll, we'll go there.
I just, I just wanted to respeak to, just quickly. I hope, you know, no means did we sound like we were complaining, but I also wanted to just, you know, respond to your point. Hours were spent in putting together and will provide you with the safety plan. Hours were spent putting together the safety plan.
Excuse me, your comments.
For the Seahawks.
Just address us, please.
So if there's any concern with that, you know, I would ask anyone to make sure that you read through it. It is a lengthy plan. Many hours were spent putting that together. So, you know, and it was based on many guidelines. It wasn't something that we said, hey, just let us play. You know, we wanted to make sure we put together something that was safe for the kids and in detail. So, yeah, I just wanted to respond to that. Thanks.
I did read through it. It's very impressive, very impressive. So thank you for your time.
Okay, so at this point now, we're going to go to any comments that may be on the telephone.
And we heard from the public, if everybody can make sure your microphone is off when we're on, we're hearing breathing in between things.
I wanna keep breathing.
I mean, you are allowed to breathe. But there's a hot mic, there's a hot mic. You are now live streaming. Please repeat your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Keith Burke, 305 Alder Drive in Egg Harbor Township. My question is, first of all, I'd say thank you again to all of the experts of the administration and the teaching staffs in dealing with this unprecedented problem as far as creating a reasonable learning environment for our kids. And I really thank you for that. I'm sure the whole township feels the same way. I had a couple of questions and obviously your first concern is safety of the students, say before the students end the opening. I noticed that, Miller School for sure, but the district, most schools use a split-week schedule where you're putting two days together, like Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. I see that Monday is a closed day for Egg Harbor Township and then the students, they're virtual on Monday. And they do regular scheduling on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, Friday. I was concerned with the rationale for that in terms of the cleaning schedule because with, with Monday being all virtual, I'm assuming that Monday would be a deep cleaning day. And, you know, the rest of the week, you have Tuesday through Friday, students in the building, so you're gonna have less opportunities to do deep clean with everybody there. I was worried about the rationale instead of going Monday or maybe a Wednesday versus the Monday. And the second part of my question is, I understand, the first question I had is, my understanding that in grade four, all the students will be eating together in the cafeteria. I know they've been socially distanced. But in terms of that, putting that many students together, even socially distanced in one area, I was thinking that is that the best way to go in terms of safety? Or is it better to go with a grab and go lunch as the students are leaving a little earlier anyway? So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burke. I think the second, the second part revolved around the Miller, the Miller cafeteria usage.
I know I heard the first part. In the first part, we did discuss and explore in the road back to school planning. And when we had our committees and our facilities director, a part of that facilities committee, we discussed the cleaning process. And our approach to cleaning is that we deep clean every day. So we don't have that one day that we call deep cleaning. In fact, you know, folks should really shy right away from that because we are proud to say that we deep clean throughout the day. And as soon as the staff leaves, it's, you know, the deep cleaning process goes into effect. So we're proud that that occurs here. And I know that occurs at other school districts as well. Regarding fourth grade, I'm gonna need more clarity. Yes, I know students are in the Miller School cafeteria and they eat by grade levels and that's going on in our other elementaries as well. So maybe I need some more clarification. We're worried about where they're sitting. I'm not sure what it was.
He was worried about fourth grade eating together in the cafeteria. I do know in Miller, there are four lunch periods, so it wouldn't be an entire grade level, but I'm not sure exactly the specificity of his concern.
Is that what you heard? I'm looking at Mr. Santilli because I know, and Dr. Hery, because they, they had the meeting, particularly Dr. Hery. He went through the logistical pieces with all the principals, so he's gonna be able to give some feedback.
I'd be happy to address that. Sitting down with Mr. Batterste, we did talk about the concepts of either grab and go or sit-down lunch. One of the concerns was if it was a grab and go at the end of the day, it made it a very long day between meals for fourth graders and fifth graders. So he was able with his staff to develop a spacing pattern that would allow to use the cafeteria area and some students seating on the stage that will pry the appropriate distance that's required by the, I guess it's the New Jersey Department of Health or any county health. So it's functional. It allows the students to get nourishment rather than just at the end of the day. And although I was at the school this morning for their drop-offs and their opening up, I'll certainly take a look at it tomorrow at their actual lunch shift. But no issues were reported today. In fact, I believe at the last public meeting, the question came up about that important lunch shift. And I had just gotten that new diagram and I presented it to the Board of Education in terms of how Mr. Batterste and his administration was approaching that situation. It seems to be a workable situation, but for the caller, I will certainly go in at the lunch shifts tomorrow and personally inspect it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Thank you for your comment.
You are now live streaming. Please repeat your name and address, please.
Good evening, this is Terry Alabarta, 206 West Wood River, Egg Harbor Township. I just wanted to say, my kids, they went back to school today. and everything from taking the bus in to their classes, everything ran smoothly for them at Fernwood and the high school. And for their social and emotional health, they were just so happy to be back in school and it was a great experience for them and they are very excited for tomorrow. So, I just wanted to let you know that there are things failing right for sure and huge things. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Thank you, Terri. We're doing our best.
You are now live streaming. Please repeat your name and address, please. Go ahead with public comment.
I have this question regarding the asynchronous now, you know, longer than a part of the schedule. What was the rationale behind that? I think that's a concern not only for the students, but they're meant to be allowing a lot of the rate of technology.
Same time, but also allows there's time to prepare their lessons and have adequate lessons for things like when today the internet went out and children were left scrambling. Even though the teachers had great plans set up, there was backups, I feel as though maybe an asynchronous day would help with any issues that come up during that time.
Did you get that? Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure I heard the very first portion.
That's why I asked before she hung up, but I'll just repeat it. She was asking what asynchronous day and why did the schedule change? And she felt the benefit of that was what she said at the end.
Well, we can certainly summarize that, right?
Okay, so we went to synchronous to provide equity for all because the asynchronous piece in terms of hours that students would be engaged with the teacher was not panning out to be equal. And we are all about equity for all. So, it's very important to us that when it was brought to our attention, we did the research and we were getting ready to put the plan in place. Again, I mentioned earlier that sometimes words on a paper, you know, they're words on a paper and you gotta read them and you gotta look and study and get a feel for what they're gonna be when they get into action and you run it by people. And, you know, we had some comments and some feedback and when we went back to the drawing board, we saw that there was inequities. And the last thing I ever want for any student in this district is inequity. So, it was based on equity. And that's why we are doing what we're doing. And I realize it's tough. Today's the first day. And again, patience, understanding, flexibility. We'll get there, all together. We'll get there. All right, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comment, for the answer.
And just as a reminder, there is a 30-second delay before it hits. So, we're just waiting. We wait the full minute. Good to go, Mr. Castellano.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you for public comment. And at this point, I'm gonna ask for comments from board members. And we'll start with Mr. Delmarque.
Just a thank you to everybody for their great work and how happy I am, pleased I am, that the kids are back in school. And that's great and I think that we're making progress. And I love the idea that we're trying to be positive with everything because I think that's the most important part. If we can keep working together as a community, we'll get there. And I know the goal is to get everybody back. I think that'll happen, but we have to go through the steps. And thank everybody for all their efforts today. It's great.
Thank you, Lou. Mr. Ellis?
Just keep... I'm just really proud of the work you're trying to do for your darn and getting kids back in school. And I know parents are excited, kids are excited. Just keep up the hard work. I know it's not easy for your staff.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gilbert Floyd.
I just wanted to say that, just have a few comments. I think there were a lot of important things that were said tonight. I think a lot of listening to the superintendent's report in reference to the opening of the first day of school. I just want to make sure that we, you know, and as you said, Dr. Grushia about far as patience and that we will get there. And I just, I just really want the callers that did call in and people that did speak tonight, that, and I'm speaking for myself and I think for the board too, that we did hear you, whether it was, whether it was a positive comment or whether it was, you know, feedback on, you know, things that you think that need to be improved about our, you know, our rollback, rollback plan. I just think that, I just wanted to know that we do hear them and that I know that the administration will address any issues or concerns that come from parents in reference to the delivery of instruction for our students in the midst of this type of situation that we're in with remote learning and hybrid learning. This is, you know, it is a very serious situation in order to make sure that we meet the needs of the students because that's why we're all here. So, I just wanted to say that, and I do believe that our district will, our district administration and superintendent will address any issues and concerns that do arise for students, especially with the one, you know, person mentioned, students with IEP, students with 504s, students with needs. That is important. Also, Mr. Delmarque, when you addressed the social and emotional needs, and I am a little partial to that when you said to administrators and teachers and different things, but, you know, I feel like principals, administrators and things, they're kind of like, they're kind of like the mom of the family. Sometimes people, you know, mom does a lot. She, you know, keeps, you know, holds things together sometimes and sometimes people forget to ask about them. So, that was a very, a very good piece and I think we all need that at this time. And I looked at Ms. Anai and said, we forgot about the poor BAs. Anytime you deal with people's money and administration, we deal with people's children. So, those are some, those are prized possessions to people, their finances and their children, so. And as Ms. Burke said one day, you know, we all, you know, the mama bear, papa bear, will do anything for our children. And I'd just like to also say that the student rep who spoke in reference to his history class and his teacher and how he was promoting, not promoting a party, but he's promoting democracy and getting out and voting. I think that's amazing that he's doing that at the high school for those students. And also, I'd just like to say thank you to my children's teachers at Miller and Fernwood. They call if it's assignment that's missing and it wasn't turned in. They call me, they email me. And I had, one time I was driving to work and, you know, I was driving to work and I worked about 40 minutes, 45 minutes away and I was like, oh, you know, I got a lot of different things on my plate, things to do. And the teacher calls me to tell me that my son was doing a great job, like that he just shows up on time and that he is doing what he's supposed to do. And I just told her, thank you. And she didn't have to do that. You know, people, you should call and check on people's children, but I just want to say thank you to those, my children's teachers at Fernwood and at Miller School because I appreciate it and when someone goes above and beyond the call of duty. So, and just with that, I'm just, you know, happy for the students and I'm happy that we had a great first day. And I do know that, you know, there's a honeymoon period to everything. And even when the bumps come, I do believe that we'll address all the issues and concerns that people have and to the best of our ability because you're not gonna make everyone happy. But we're definitely gonna put students first. So, I'm proud of the district, what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Price. I would just like to say, echo Tamika's sentiment. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and the great questions. Please keep in touch with your schools for questions or concerns that you may have, your principals, whatever the case may be. We hear you and we are responding to your concerns. I mean, it's quite clear, so I just want everybody to remember that and keep up the communication. It's very important. Communication is key. Also, I did have the opportunity last week to participate in some of the School Boards Association sessions as well. It was a great thing, Lou, Pete. It's just, it's such a wonderful thing to be able to do and sit down and go back and revisit and keep learning. I took some of the classes on facilities and sunshine laws and there's just so much, an immense variety of training that you can tap into. It was very well laid out and easy to participate in. So, I just wanted to comment on that as well. So, that's it for me over here tonight. And I want to wish everybody a safe one and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Mrs. Sullivan?
I want to thank everybody that participated tonight also. I'm sorry that the swim parents have gone because I do want to make a comment about that, that you do have, I'm not gonna speak for the entire board, but I know there's an enormous support already from the board. And I've been in contact with Dr. Grushia and she is 100% behind you. And as soon as we get a thumbs up, this board is gonna be ready to act. And I know that Dr. Grushia will get the information to us and will have you back in the pool as soon as possible. So, I want everybody to know that the board and Dr. Grushia are working very hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slough.
Well, I guess after eight people, everything's been said, but I want to thank everybody for their hard work. It's definitely not the normal school year. But the question that's asked of me a lot is, when will the kids go back to school? Do you think the kids will go back to school five days a week? And I'm very confident that Dr. Grushia will make that happen as soon as she can and also get the kids back in the pool. It's all about the kids and I know that you're doing what's best for them. And thank you to everybody else for everything else that you do. This is Anai.
Thank you, and Mrs. Burke.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry. And it's so nice to have an audience here with us.
Yes, it is.
It almost feels normal. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Burke.
Thank you. I want to echo what obviously everyone has said that getting our kids back in the building is awesome. And I don't think anyone doubts the hard work that the administrators, that Dr. Grushia and the teachers and our staff have put in to make that possible. So, thank you so much for being fearless during this crazy times. I do want to comment on our first caller tonight. She was a parent slash employee and she brought up teaching virtual students at the same time as teaching in-person students. Number one, I just want to add, you know, when you work in the district and you're a parent of district, it can be very awkward to call and voice opinions as a parent. I was one of those people and I remember going up to, you know, the podium many times and feeling like, oh, am I going to get in trouble tomorrow at work? But I wanted to tell that caller that I see her as brave because we always have to put our kids first. So, she called and she was putting her kids first. And I hope other teachers and other staff members feel like they can call because I know as board members, we want to hear, we want to hear from you. Especially when it's involving your kids. So, thank you for calling. I too am concerned about having teachers wear both hats of teaching the students that are home at the same time as teaching the students in person. And so, I want to know what kind of benchmarks are we looking for to making, to make sure that our students in both those environments are getting the academics that they need? And at the same time, our teachers' social, emotional well-being is considered because that is quite a feat to ask of them. So, what are our checks, you know, checks and balances to make sure that this is going correctly?
It's up to you, Doc. We can just, we can discuss it another time. It's totally your fault.
Yeah, I mean, it's something we can bring to curriculum as we always share our benchmarks and our updates on how we're assessing students. Right now, the Department of Education said business as usual and that includes student assessment, teacher evaluation, CUSAC. So, we're wrapping our heads around all that right now. We've done a great job in the virtual world, starting back in April, looking at standards and, you know, measuring our achievement. We went into September knowing, you know, which standards were accomplished, which needs, which ones need work. So, I think we've done, we've done a great job in that area, but it's something, yeah, that the curriculum committee would work. So, you know, I also appreciate your comments with the teacher who called in tonight, but I also want to assure that teacher that there is a chain of command and that there is frustrations, that she has a principal. And I walked through that building today and my door is always open for concerns whether it comes from the teaching staff or as a parent. So, I don't like surprises, as you don't like surprises. And, you know, I encourage anyone who has frustrations on the teaching staff to use that chain of command. I also encourage parents that have frustrations to call us because as I stated in my presentation, that I reach out to parents, they reach out to me, they reach out to my assistants and whatever we can do to make people feel less anxious and better about what's going on. But I recall about a month ago that this Board of Education asked us to look at our plan and revise it and move it from an asynchronous to a synchronous, okay? And this synchronous model is a model that is being used by large school districts right now because it accomplishes that task and as you, of meeting all students with equity. And as you know, this plan was not easy to put together because of our size. All right, and we asked for that time to put it together and get it all together. And I think we have a pretty good plan in place. And I will state again, I understand there are some frustrations and it was the first day. It's the first day I rode a bike. It wasn't my best day, but I'll tell you, I'll take you on 55 miles any day right now and that's after practice and putting it on the pavement and, you know, working out to get to a certain point. So, again, I ask for patience, I ask for understanding, I ask for flexibility and I ask for folks to have the confidence to let us know what they're feeling during the day. I mean, I feel bad. It's 8:00 at night and, you know, how that person feel and I wish I knew this earlier today. So, you know, hopefully that person can sleep better tonight. But we'll look into it, all right? And help her with her teaching and with her students and that goes for anybody else who feels that way. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. So, is there anything else from administration?
No, just a big thank you for understanding. We're tired. So, looking to get a good night's sleep and getting out in those schools tomorrow and looking for another great day seeing the students. And that'll be the second day for the A group. And then on Thursday, it's the first day of school all over again that we welcome the B group students. So, thank you again and think positive and have a great night.
Okay, so our next meeting will be our, our next full meeting will be our work session, our November work session, Tuesday, November 10. So, with that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion second.
Motion in a second. Can I see a raise of hands? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Be safe.